Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please note that this meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in compliance with the Governor's executive orders. All participants may attend remotely or in person. This meeting is being conducted in real time and is open to the public, and any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to the Town of Monroe website for public inspection. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this hybrid meeting remotely at any one time. Code access is granted solely by the technology provider and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. In the unlikely event, it appears that we are approaching that limit, the Chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. This meeting is being recorded, and while we ask those attending remotely to mute their microphones unless recognized by the speaker. Anything you say, do, or display on your screen may become part of the recording, which will be posted to the town's website within seven days. The use of the chat features is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting at any time. We'll have roll call. Ms. Aguilar?
I believe she's out.
She's out of town, okay. Mr. Mauer?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. La Palace?
Present.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Present.
Ms. Wales?
Here.
Jonathan Formicella, I am here. We only have one member missing, Ms. Aguilar. The consent calendar. Hearing no objections, I'm going to pass the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mauer?
A couple of fixes on the meeting minutes and the voting records.
Mr. Mauer, why don't we take the meeting minutes first?
On the meeting minutes, my only comment is I would ask that the minutes reflect the conversation with regards to new business item B. There was a great deal of conversation on there with comments from and questions asked, and I feel that the discussion there really doesn't get into that comment, those comments or conversation at all. I'd ask that that section be looked into and revised accordingly.
Mr. Mauer, what section again?
New Business Item B, Resolution 21-73, the Shared Services Agreement.
Okay. Is there anything in particular you would like added?
There was discussion with regards to the Charter, which I think was a discussion that was ripe for consideration between different members. So I feel that that should be added to the minutes just to reflect, especially the fact that there was an objection with regards to the Charter from one member. So just having that as part of the public record and as part of the meeting minutes would be appropriate.
And Mr. Mauer, were there any other corrections that you would like to have made?
For the minutes, that was the only one. There are two corrections in the voting record.
Hearing no objection, with the addition of the comments regarding the, any potential issue with the Charter, I would ask that the minutes be amended to add any discussion on the Charter for that point. The meeting minutes, Mr. Mauer?
Yes.
Excuse me, the voting record.
Yes, on the voting record, for the elections of the Chairman and the election of the Vice-Chair for the, to elect Didi Martin on both, it says motion passed on both of those.
Okay, we will change those. Motion to elect Ms. Martin chair shall be changed. I would ask that that be changed to motion fail three to five. And for the Vice-Chair, change from motion passed to motion fail three to five. No objections. Any other comments or questions regarding consent calendar?
Those are all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd ask with those changes that we pass the consent calendar, I'm going to ask that communications A through K be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. And we are on public participation. I will begin with those members of the public that are here in person, and then we will turn to those that have either called in or are on their computers this evening. So are there any members of the public that would like to participate this evening during public participation? That are here? Seeing none, I'm going to ask, is there anyone online or on their phones that is attending this meeting that they would like to participate in public participation? Mr. Kellogg, I don't see or hear anyone.
I do not see anyone either. Just please remember to unmute yourself if you are looking to speak. Seeing none.
Okay, and I'll ask one more time, is anyone in the audience that would like to participate? Yes, ma'am. Could you please come down, name an address at the microphone?
I don't know how the meeting works exactly.
Sure, just name an address in the microphone and... Easier to go on the other side of the bar.
Yep.
And just stand right in front of us.
My name's Laura Gindick. I live at 21 Farm View Road, here in Monroe. I just have a question.
Just stay in front of the microphone. I'm sorry, it's got to be picked up.
I don't know how the meeting works. I know we're not... Maybe supposed to ask questions at the end of the meeting?
Right now, sorry.
But I came because I was concerned about the proposed field construction and entrance to some added fields for the park. I know a lot of my neighbors are really upset about it, and we weren't told, except one of our neighbors is on the Parks and Recs Department Committee, and that's the only reason we know. So we wanted to come and hear what the proposal is, but are we allowed to ask any questions or anything tonight? Because we weren't even notified. There should have been something sent out to us, because this would impact our street. We're the one that's considered the best, the least expensive, and I don't think just because least expensive, we should be the ones impacted that way.
Okay, so just, I'm not going to comment on the content.
What is our, how do we get to have a comment or have a say in what's going on?
So if you would like to comment on pretty much anything in town, if you want, this is your time to do so right now.
We don't know exactly what all of it is, so if we have to sit and listen to it tonight, we still, do we not get to say anything? When do we get to make a comment or ask questions? That's why I wanted to know that process.
Okay. We, so this is the, what's known as first public participation, which means you kind of get to talk about whatever you would like to, okay? Later on in the meeting, there's something known as second public participation, but that is only open if we have an unresolved matter before us, okay? So if, so now would be the, probably the best time if you have a comment about the fields or anything like that. Now would be a good time to give that comment to us.
My first comment is, I'm disappointed that the way the town runs, that our neighborhood was not notified and able to make some comments and have some input before they went through four, or five, or six different spots. But they considered, and now ours is picked as being one. Our street's a neighborhood, there's school buses, there's kids outside, you know, wait for buses. It's not a big street. I've called the police many times because people already speed down our road as a cut through. So I don't think it's a real good option for picking us, and I've heard that it's because it's the least expensive. You know, not, the least expensive isn't always the best, and I don't want to say, put it on Parkview and make it in that neighborhood, but people who bought a house on Cutler's Farm knew they were on a busy road, and they bought their home so they could get into their park. You know, people coming and going through the park that way. And the town owns the park, so they could make a path through that. So I wanted to know also why we weren't notified before all these choices and studies are being done, because maybe people would have enough valid objections, so people on your council or whoever did it wouldn't waste time and money pursuing something that really is not what the people who bought a house and paid the taxes in this town would like to see. And I don't understand why we weren't told something about that beforehand, and we just happened to find out because somebody on their street is involved. And I know there's ways that things could have been mailed in our tax bill, like we have that, those phone numbers, phone calls can be made, they can ask volunteers to call, because when we have, you know, referendums, all these different things to vote for, I get slews of calls from people here in town. Did you go vote? Yeah, no, so our numbers are not private. People already have them, and we could have been notified. So it's hard to also ask questions about, make real comments, so we hear about this, but I'm disappointed that it got this far without anyone asking us that are going to be impacted on that street. And how are we supposed to know what's being decided when we can't go to every single meeting that all of you have?
So, public participation, if you, if you look at our agenda, it's for the public to speak. It also says not necessarily that you'll have an answer to, meaning you can pose questions to us, but you won't necessarily get any response, because it's supposed to be your time to say what you would like to say and have an impact on the record about how you feel about certain thing going on in town.
Well, does the Town Council, do all these different committees care about the people that it impacts? Because there's, you know, this is not a big street to have a lot of construction and things going on, and even parks that I can feel. Ultimately, workers are going to be hard on the show. Down, there'll be extra trash, like I said, there's school buses, there's kids that play, and this is a quiet street, so there's some concern about that. And then I've also heard a lot of people saying that there are not as many kids playing in sports as it used to be. So, you know, how do we get to have a say in something in our town, so there's just a few people, that it doesn't impact them? Everybody has a wish list, and we don't all get everything on our wish list. So just because somebody says it's the cheapest way, there might be something else to give up, to spend a little more money to do something else. I just want to be on record that I'm disappointed, I think my neighbors are too, because we were not notified, and it got already to this stage, and we were not told. I know some people aren't here tonight, they couldn't make it, because this was the last minute thing they found out about, and... I just want to know how we can be participants and people actually listen to us.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to participate? Seeing none, I'm going to close our public participation portion of the meeting. Moving on to action items, the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Do we have a report? Hearing no report, we'll move on to planning zoning, public works, and parks and recreation matters. Councilmember Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the hot potato tonight in regards to this. So, we did meet for the first time, obviously, with COVID, we didn't have the opportunity to meet this, this field project has been in place now, let me guess, the better than six years, maybe eight years, since I was on the Parks and Rec Commission. So it's brought to my attention that Ms. Orros and Bill Holdsworth, that they have been working on this, this field diligently with the Commission, and that it was going to be coming to council. So we did have a meeting, I think it was last Thursday. Yeah, and so we sat down, we sat down with some of the people from the Commission, came for public participation, or came to participate. Mr. Holdsworth, the Town Planner, Rick Schultz, and also Ms. Orros. So what they did is they told the, our Subcommittee what their strategy was, that the, there was a need for this field, and that they wanted to move forward with some of the plans and ideas that they had. Excuse me, I got a little summer allergies. So that being said, we started to look at what they had planned, and they had the field in the back that was going to be done, and six options in which to potentially get in to do this work. Now, this, this project is in the infancy, the ultimate infancy of its state. So there is no plan, there is no complete strategy at this point. There are ideas, there are concepts, there are suggestions, but there is nothing that is concrete at this point. Ms. Martin and myself felt that the Commission, the planning zoning, Ms. Orros and Bill Holdsworth had done their due diligence, had brought something forward, and suggested that TPA, which is the Architectural Surveying Organization that we're using on this, do a census on these potential pathways into the park to do this field. So that being said, we felt it was prudent of us to, or behoove us to move forward on that with TPA. The one caveat that I asked for was that TPA will closely at the impact of the neighborhood, because the actual plan called for what it was going to cost and how the operation was going to work within the park. Okay, how much it was going to impact daily operations within the park. The reality is, if we're going to use an access path through neighborhoods, we need to know how it's going to impact those neighborhoods. And without a consensus, without, without a study, a small study, that we have to pay for, we're not going to have those answers. So I sent Bill and Ms. to TPA to, with a vote on this, to have TPA add on, let's look at, to look at the potential entrances and how they're going to impact park operation and the neighborhood as well. As I understand this project, if this goes as planned, and as I understand it at this point, the material that is on that site is going to be moved, it's going to be displaced in the sense where they'll take the topsoil, they'll take the clay, they'll take the bankfront gravel, they will move it from side to side, from a high point to a low point, which in my opinion makes me understand that the, the amount of dump trucks and things of that nature are going to be minimal after the original, after the original setup. Now, the setup is going to be determined based on this study. So until we know there is, at this point, there is no cheapest price, there is no best practice, this study is going to help us with that. As a town, as, you know, I can speak for myself, and I can speak for the people on that, we're very concerned at how this affects the neighborhood, and I would be very upset to think that anybody would think that we wouldn't take the concern of the town and that neighborhood into consideration while doing that. We understand that there's kids in that neighborhood, we understand that there's activities in that neighborhood, we understand. So this study's going to help us get the best answers. At this point, it seems to me the impact, and I don't know until TPA comes out with the study, but the impact of the trucks going through are not going to be much more than, yeah, not much more than what it would be if you were going to have a house built in your neighborhood, you know, trucks coming in and out a little bit. But I do understand that one of these access roads does start, or one of these opportunities to get into the park does start at the end of the road. The only thing I could say about this in closing is that the kids need the field. You know, they need to play their sports, they need to operate, and there's times where, you know, we have to try to be a little bit more understanding and try to work with each other to move forward and get this stuff done. But, you know, at this point, we have no real direction until we get, you know, the study back from TPA. All right? Sorry for the long winded explanation.
No problem. Just as a summary, Councilmember Rooney, what we're acting on tonight is only to approve the funding for determining which access point, what are the access point options are.
Right, so tonight, this is to recognize those access points. TPA always, already has had those access points identified, but tonight is to move forward on a study to find out which access point is the best financially and the least amount of impact on the park, park operations, and the neighborhoods.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does it behoove anyone to point out section A of the scope of the work?
Chairman, I'd be happy to entertain some discussion on the contract itself and further information when we get to that item on the agenda.
Yeah, again, well, thank you, Mr. Rooney, for your report. We'll continue to...
I could offer some short work, I'm just, there's other stuff that we can certainly talk about when we get to the agreement itself.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Reed, Command Legislative and Administrative Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just go through, we did meet tonight prior to council. We reviewed a few items in new business, six of them to be exact. They were the TPA Design Group Wolf Park Multi-Purpose Fields Agreement, so that, that seems to be getting already some, some discussion, and I know we'll be discussing that. Mr. Kellogg has a fairly, fairly detailed explanation as to what's going on and what this agreement is, so that, that did reach consensus. WFMT Network Affiliation License, Exploring Music License, Beethoven Music License, the AIA Document for Exhibit A Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, and then Item F was Office Operations Coordinator Job Description, and Mr. Kellogg also has some good explanation what happened there and a little bit of history. So all of those items did reach consensus to move to council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Strategic Planning Committee has not had an opportunity to meet since our last meeting. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney, do you have any update on that? All caught up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in regards to the AIA document tonight, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, that's going to be moving forward. Just my, my final things on that is, you know, very thankful for, to see this project at this point. Our EMS personnel have been working in substandard environments for a very long time. This will give them the breathing room they need to do the job and service the town the way we'd like to see them do that. I'm hoping that this council will move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. To keep you talking, Mr. Rooney, did you have an update from the Police Commission?
Regards to, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the Police Department, the only update I have is that we, during COVID, we did have a, Officer Michael Johnson was moved to Sergeant. He didn't really have the best ceremony, so congratulations to him. Obviously, we didn't have the ability to do that. And Officer Jeff Loomis just recently was moved to Sergeant from Police Officer. As we know, Jeff Loomis has one of the most lovable dogs in the history of the Police Department, Rigs. So I guess they were trying to find a home for him. I believe Officer DeCarly will be taking him, so we have a great service dog that's going to continue to service the town, Officer Rigs, and that's good news. Good dogs are hard to find, so it's nice that we can keep him operating, and congratulations to Jeff Loomis and his future with the department. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Rourke has the Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee met since our last meeting?
No, we have not.
All right, thank you. Mr. First Electman, your report.
Thank you, just a really brief update tonight on a couple of developments. One is progress on our online permit system. I know that we presented some other agreements relative to payment processing and things like that to get some, some things ready to, to move forward. Really happy to report that, working with the development team that's engaged through MetroCog and through a lot of hard work of staff, including Mr. Holdsworth, the system is ready to move forward. We've launched a beta test with some high-volume contractors. For those not familiar, beta testing is done to evaluate the performance of the system in a live environment, so that we can basically identify any bugs or issues upfront. Once we get through that, we will be launching Phase One for trade permits. That's basically allow electrical, plumbing, those types of things, the more straightforward, and that will be available for all customers, hopefully, in the very near future. I will keep the council informed when we're ready to get to the next step, but we will start, again, taking live online permits for our beta test vendors at this point. Secondly, is just a couple of business updates. Nunu's Sandwich Shop is open on 162 Main Street, and Rob's Auto also opening up 256 Main Street. And last but not least, we have a ribbon-cutting scheduled on July 20th for Jenny's Pizzeria, their expansion into the adjoining unit. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening, and our first item of new business is the acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council accept the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. One, $1,848 from Friends of the Library, EWML. Two, $2,000 from Christ and Ministry/International Incorporated for Food Pantry. Three, $7,000 from Monroe Lion Charities Incorporated for Food Pantry. And four, $2,000 from Monroe Lion Charities Incorporated for Project One.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donald Lynn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we are greatly appreciative of these large donations. These are consistent with, with similar donations these entities have made in the past for these different programs, and they are greatly appreciated and will certainly be put to good use for, for these causes.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman, and I think I can speak for all the Town Council members on how appreciative we are of all these very generous donations. Any other discussion? Hearing none, may I call for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And those against. Hearing none, this motion passes eight to zero. B, Resolution 21-103 to Consider an Act Upon a Resolution Regarding TPA Design Group Wolf Park Multi-Purpose Fields Revisions and Construction Documents Letter Agreement. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-103, resolve that candidate M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Wolf Park Multi-Purpose Fields Revisions and Construction Documents Letter Agreement as devised July 8, 2021, and any associated documents by and between TPA Design Group for the Wolf Park Fields Project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know Councilmember Rooney spoke a little bit about this in his Subcommittee Report in regards to this project. So just to kind of recap a little bit of that... So just to kind of recap a little bit of that, you know, there's a longstanding project to add these two new fields to Wolf Park. That's a project that was approved many years ago, and funding was set aside for these fields. The project was put out to bid a few years ago, and at the time, the bid submissions that were received were far in excess of what was anticipated, anything anywhere from 60% over to maybe 300% over. So at the time, when those bids came back, it was a good reason to evaluate what was going on. And I, we had some new staff in place at the time as well. Our Director of Parks and Rec had changed. We have, at this point now, have a new Town Planner. And we also, since COVID came on, had the opportunity to also engage from a project management standpoint, our community and economic recovery coordinator as well. So that team, again, was joined by Mr. Holesworth later on in that effort after, as we were working through the COVID issues. So in the process of trying to understand why the costs were, what they were coming in at, there were a lot of things that were identified in terms of the size of the fields. And in some of the meetings that we subsequently held with the Parks and Rec Director and some of the users of, prospective users of those fields, the leaders of various team sports, we found that the fields were actually greater than what was probably being asked for by the community. And so we certainly wanted to right-size that. Part of that effort was the costs of this project were increased due to a variety of things that were a result of that, such as stone walls being removed so that fields could be constructed, and then the stone walls having to be replaced, things like that, that were just adding a lot of cost to the project. So it was this effort of trying to understand what was going on and identify, is there a better way that we should be approaching this? We did not accept any of the bids at the time and decided the project team needed to kind of reevaluate this and come up with different alternatives. So it was in that process and working with the team that they identified a bunch of different ideas, and this was also working a little bit with the TPA group that had done the original design, to identify options that, or actions that really should be taken to kind of bring this project back together. It was in that context that the access paths were also discussed. And I know that that was something that, I know some folks here tonight are concerned about. I know that when this, when the Parks and Rec Commission also received a presentation on, an update presentation on this, it was something that some of the Parks and Rec commissioners were also concerned about. So as a result, I mean, we wanted to make sure that we really had as much information as possible before going forward with amending or revising this field plan. So the agreement for TPA was further revised to make sure that we get their opinion on the various access routes, as well as some of the cost analysis of those routes. And certainly, I think, you know, we'll all agree that cost alone is not the only factor, but it is one that I think is important. And the intent, I think, is for us to get all the information, including the professional opinion of TPA Design Group, on the overall, on the various access pathways, the newly envisioned project in terms of the smaller size fields and eliminating some of the other ancillary things that were driving costs unnecessarily, to come up with a new proposal. And again, as Mr. Rooney alluded to as well, this revision is still kind of in the formative stages. And what's before the Town Council this evening is this contract or letter agreement for them, for TPA basically to revise their designs, but first get that information in terms of the different access paths and what they feel would be. I know the team has done a lot of analysis on pros and cons, and certainly if you want to get into a lot of that granularity, I know Missy is here, Mr. Holesworth is here. But a lot of that, a lot of that was, is kind of the preliminary work of kind of their estimation as staff and what are the obvious pros and cons. But we're looking for TPA to provide their opinion on that as well. The intent would be that all of that analysis would come back along with TPA's estimate for those various options. That would obviously come back. You know, we would certainly want to get input from all the different parties as well. There would, you know, to address some of the earlier comments about notice to the neighbors, we would certainly have subsequent meetings where the final determination of what, how we want to amend this plan, how we want to move forward, would have to come back for further input, further review. There'd be opportunity for as much public input as we need. Certainly, any proposal would have to go back before the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, because this would be a modification of that approval. That would certainly also afford additional public input. And typically, that's where abutting property owners would statutorily be noticed as well of that meeting. So there'd be another opportunity there. And certainly, as we've done in the past, we'd always entertain any kind of community, you know, any kind of a neighborhood discussion in terms of impacts to any neighborhood as well. So the intent of this agreement is to get more information so that we as a, so that, you know, this body and the other town bodies, and we can present that, and we'd certainly expect and anticipate and welcome public input at that time as well in terms of the various options and what's best for the community. So with that, once that was done, direction would be given to TPA to finalize that plan so that it could go before the various regulatory bodies and get final approval. At that point, then TPA would be engaged to generate new construction documents so that the project could move back out to bid. And then ultimately, as you know, once the town, if the town were to accept one of those bids, a final agreement with that company would again come back before council in a public meeting that would have input from the public as well prior to that final bid, or final contract being awarded for any, for a successful bid. So we are a ways away from any kind of a decision in terms of where we're going as far as that access pathway. Yes, one of the pathways that I know is of concern at the corner of Farmview and, and Grey Hollow, thank you, is one that is a contender based on some of the initial input and analysis of the team. However, we are getting more information prior to, we want to get more information prior to us committing to that or any of the pathways. And the other thing I want to emphasize is, because I did get a couple of inquiries in the committee, is that I want to be crystal clear that in no scenario are we contemplating a permanent public access to the park through that pathway. This would strictly be a limited construction type of access. It would not even be a paved roadway. It would probably be some kind of a somewhat temporary roadway. It may be left for emergency vehicle access potentially in the future. Any of these kind of temporary access ways that are under consideration. But we are not contemplating, whether it was here or Parkview, we are not contemplating a new public access point to the park. With that, I think, before I touched upon some of the more important points.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kellogg. Just to confirm, so the public will have at least three more opportunities to provide comments?
I would, I would believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Yeah. Mr. Kellogg, the in-house group, and group that worked on that, presented six different entrances or whatever, six different-
Six ideas, six different ideas.
Exactly. In the, the letter from TPA to you dated May 18th, it says, "They will prepare an analysis of the relative cost challenges and impacts of the two possible work area access route. One is the existing tractor path from Farmview at the end of Grey Hollow Road, and the other is from the main parking lot past the existing courts and pavilion referred to in the in-house study as access number two." Are we not having them look at the other, like Parkview? Or what is it?
Farmview.
No? Park Lane?
I believe Parkview was, is being evaluated relative to electrical and water access. Is that correct, Mr. Holesworth? I believe this was the, based on the discussion during the, you know, Parks and Rec Commission meeting relative to the, you know, the two top contenders, if you will, the two, you know, various ideas, that these would be the ones that we want TPA to do the most detailed analysis of. But I certainly would expect that there, you know, there's a, there's a list of different options that we would want them to-
So you would be looking at all six access points?
I don't, I, that was my understanding, Mr. Holesworth. Is that correct?
Hi, I'm Bill Holesworth. I'm the Community Economic Recovery Coordinator. I work with Missy and Rick Schultz on this project. So some of the access points are not necessarily viable. Access Point 1, for example, cuts across the junior soccer field. Buried below the junior soccer field are three pipes for drainage that run across the field. So having trucks going over that would crush those pipes, and then that field would have to be dug up and rebuilt. And we felt that that would be an extremely costly project. We can absolutely have the analytics done, how much that would cost. But Access Point 1, in our minds, wasn't really on the table. Access Point Number 3, Access Number 3 comes in from the Senior Center, can go through the back of Senior Center because of where the septic tank was placed, and it's not a weight-bearing septic tank, so we cannot drive vehicles over that septic tank without having to replace that septic tank. So we'd have to go off to the right in between the Senior Center and the Don Quinto Football Field. And that area is riddled with wetlands. In fact, the Quonic River runs directly from where the field would be built all the way out towards Cutler's Farm. So you'd be running right down the middle of that, of that wetlands. And when we spoke with internal staff and the inland wetlands group, they said that that was their least likely to be approved by the inland wetlands commission. So we didn't pursue that one. Access Point Number 6 has been on the town books since the late 1800s, when the town purchased that. And that one is a very narrow, it's about 25 feet wide, and it runs behind the houses that sit on Farmview and Grey Hollow Road, and the houses that sit on Parkview. It's a little strip of land. In fact, right now, with the foliage being as thin as it is, you can't even see the entrance. But when the foliage goes away, you can absolutely see the two pillars that comes all the way out to Cutler's Farm. But we felt that that would be extremely obtrusive to both neighborhoods. It would be right in the backyard. So we didn't want to go through that one. Again, we can add any other access point that town council would like to see.
And 4?
4 is the one that we're going to look at for, for water and for electrical conduit to go through.
But not as a, I just like, I'm sorry. We came to Parks and Rec meeting, and we were just told that TPA was going to be analyzing all six. Just to clarify that. No, Bill?
All right. Excuse me. Public participation is over at this point. Ms. Martin, do you have another question for Mr. Holesworth, Mr. Kellogg, or Ms. Oros?
No, I, well, yes and no, depending on who you're talking about.
Well, one of them.
Mr. Holesworth's explanations, I fully understand, because you went through these with us in the committee meeting. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that the scope is specifically looking at mainly those two things, I mean, those two areas. And I think it's also important to note that the Park and Rec Commission voted unanimously that they would recommend Access Number 2, which I believe is coming down by the basketball courts. Is that correct?
Access Point 2 comes down by the basketball.
Right. And that was the, I think that should be known and, you know, publicly, that the commission voted that, in their opinion, that that was what they would like to see. And I know that's, that's one of the entrances that TPA will be looking at. But in your cover letter, it just said that various access points, and I think it's important to note that the commission supported Number 2.
I, that is not what was reported to me. It was reported to me that the commission had endorsed that the contract be moved forward to council with a strong recommendation to continue to evaluate Access Point 2.
Excuse me, please.
I, I don't think that's correct.
Okay.
I think they voted unanimously. There were, I think there were two votes at each, and one was on Number 2, and the other one was a split vote.
Okay. Well, we're happy to look at, look at that and clarify the record. Thank you.
Maybe you could, you know, check you the minutes or something like that.
Sure.
I have one other question. When TPA comes back with their report, there's, there's mention in their scope about, you know, that they would make presentations to appropriate committees. Is there some way that we can direct them, or you can as Selectman, to, that they make a presentation to the Park and Rec Commission? They're not listed in that group of people that would be presented to. And I think before it comes to the council, it should go to the commission.
Of course. That would always be contemplated standard.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't bring it back to council without the commission's input. Sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman.
I recognize Councilmember O'Rourke.
So, Mr. Chairman, just so that we understand here, as I'm reading what's before us tonight for consideration, the scope of the work, again, just to dovetail off of Ms. Martin's earlier reading, TPA Design Group will provide the following services. A, access road analysis. TPA will prepare an analysis of the relative cost, challenges, and impacts of two possible work access routes along the existing tractor path from Farmview Road at the end of Grey Hollow Road and from the main parking lot past the existing basketball courts and picnic pavilion. I guess reiterating that point since it's, it's come up several times in public participation here tonight during this discussion to clearly demonstrate that those two access areas that we have the most public consideration displayed this evening are, A, it's the very first point that the scope of work covers.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Mallor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I will note that this was directly addressed in LNA, and my question actually during LNA was specifically to, will there be opportunity for public comment for this? And as the Selectman covered, even after this goes forward, there will be chances for the public to comment, not only about the findings of this report, but also about any additional reports we may seek to have in the future. So, Mr. Holesworth, it's my understanding that either during the scope of this work or once we do receive the results, there's nothing stopping us from going back to TPA and asking them to analyze a different route, a different access, based either off of their findings or off of public comment, correct?
That is correct. We can continue working with TPA and ask them more questions, ask for further analysis. All of that would be- All of that would be, would come with additional costs in the contract. They might even want to include another contract for us to review, but yes, they would be more than happy to do additional analysis for us.
Wonderful. The other item that I'd ask our selectmen is, basically, once we have this report and it's going to be moving forward to any commission or any committee, whether it's planning, zoning, and then retinns, whether it's Park and Rec, or whether it's, I, it would not be directly to the council, it would be to somebody else first. But if you can make the council members aware of that and when that meeting will be, just so that we can make sure to attend or keep our, keep our eyes on the minutes for those meetings that are directly on this matter, would that be possible, Mr. Selectman?
I certainly would endeavor to make sure that we can, you know, let the council know as this project is progressing, absolutely.
As stated during LNA, I, I think we, we will, this, this is preliminary, this is to get information about these access roads. I certainly think it is important not just to have public comment, but to then take that public comment into consideration in how we continue to design this project. But based off of the items discussed today, I think getting, to, to get to that point, we first need to have these analyses. So I, I'm comfortable asking for the analysis to be done, but I do think it's important that we keep in mind the idea of getting those other access routes, especially, it sounded like, I believe it was access route number six that you said was behind the different houses, just to have some kind of idea of what the, both the costs and impact of that one would be as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, hearing none, this passes eight to zero. Item C of new business, Resolution 21-104, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding WFMT network affiliation license agreement with Windows to the World Communications Incorporated for WMNR. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21, Resolution 21-104, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the WFMT network affiliation license agreement and any associated documents by and between Window to the World Communications Incorporated to provide network affiliation with WFMT.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin.
Second.
Discussion.
Kevin.
Sorry, Ken, Ms. Martin beat you to it. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know there's this matter and the, the next two items under gen are all related. Mr. Anderson, WMNR station manager, who's here with us this evening, if there's any questions that I cannot address, has brought to my attention the opportunity for MNR to obtain programming content through Window to the World Communications. They operate WFMT, and this is the first of the three agreements before you. This is a simple network affiliation license so that we can work with WFMT to then avail ourselves of programming content.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one procedural question.
Yes, Mr. Mauer.
Would it be appropriate, I, I know we can't take the resolutions all at once, but would it be appropriate either for this, either for this or in the future, to do the resolution considering all three contracts within one motion?
Mr. Mauer, we, we can have the town attorney take a look at that. Mr. Kellogg, do you have a response?
Yeah, I'll, since I prepared the proposed resolutions, I'll, I'll give you my, my explanation, which was that, you know, certainly, I mean, I've done that in the past, however, since they were presented as three really distinct agreements, I didn't want, you know, to have a position where, if for one reason, there was an issue on one of those agreements and we didn't, you know, we, we needed to consider it separately, it became a, you know, became a more complicated matter. But, I mean, I certainly think it would have been, you know, my opinion is, we could certainly have taken them together as well. I simply put them proposed separately because they were, you know, as they were submitted, and if there was some concern with one, one of them or two of them, at least we could handle it in a more clean fashion. But.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm certainly not opposed to bundling them.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. I think for this evening, we'll just take them separately, and then we can consider that at a different point as the similar situation arises. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against? The ayes have it, eight to zero. Item D, Resolution Number 21-105, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding exploring music license agreement with Windows to the World Communications Incorporated for WMNR. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-105, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Exploring Music License Agreement and any associated documents by and between Window to the World Communications Incorporated for radio programming content for WMNR.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
So, consistent with our prior discussion, this is one of the, this is a license would allow the exploring music content, classical radio content for MNR.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against? Hearing no against, this passes eight to zero. Item E, Resolution 21-106, consider and act upon a resolution regarding Beethoven music license agreement with Windows to the World Communications Incorporated for WMNR. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-106, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Beethoven Network License Agreement and any associated documents by and between Window to the World Communications Incorporated for radio programming content for WMNR.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
So again, consistent with the prior two items, this is a similar agreement that will provide the Beethoven network programming content.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kellogg. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against? Hearing no against, this matter passes eight to zero. Item F, Resolution 21-107, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding AIA document A133-2019, Exhibit A, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-107, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the AIA document A133-2019, Exhibit A, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, and any associated documents by and between Burlington Construction for EMS facility project.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you're all well aware of the resolution that was adopted at a town meeting on June 28th for the appropriation and bonding authorization for the EMS facility project. We've talked about it at length. You all are aware as well that we have a construction management at-risk agreement with Burlington To that end, this is a anticipated part of the process now that we have a final price and Burlington has provided us with their guaranteed maximum price, which was a part of that analysis that got us to the bonding authorization. The AIA document before you now would memorialize and lock in that guaranteed maximum price through this amendment. As Councilmember Rooney stated earlier, all of this comports with all the information that was presented to their EMS Building Committee, and really, this is the last piece that's necessary for this project to now get us to the point where we can get a shovel in the ground, so to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kellogg.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Kellogg, when, when we did the bonding thing.
Yes.
What was the total amount on the EMS thing? Was it, was it at four million?
The bond amount was 4.1, which did not include the, which obviously did not include the $500,000 Steve Grant. So the final cost was just, it was like 4.559, I believe, in that, in that ballpark.
Okay, so this number comes in under the bonding number?
This, this, this guaranteed maximum price amount is the Burlington Construction's construction amount, which they're guaranteeing, but the full budget includes our costs, soft costs, bond issuance costs, and other things. So this guaranteed maximum price amount matches exactly what was presented to the council to, you know, at the town meeting relative to the, the piece of the puzzle that builds up to that amount that is funded through primarily bonding and then the Steve Grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Kevin, we can't hear it.
I'm good. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no one opposed, this motion passes eight to zero. Item G, Resolution 21-108, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding Office Operations Coordinator Job Description. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-108, resolved that the town council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the Office Operations Coordinator Job Description, previously titled Developmental Services Coordinator, and authorizes the first selectman to implement as soon as practical.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a job description that has not been looked at for quite some time. It references the developmental services as a somewhat of a, as a somewhat functional unit which really does not exist. The position is, does not, does not, has not for many years, supported the inland wetlands department. It is a public works, primarily an office operations coordinator, which is why we are proposing it be revised as such, and in the public works department. So the revisions before you are as, as recommended by me, based on human resources and our public works director input, to revise this job description to match the current, the position as it currently exists and it has, as it has been functioning for many years.
Very much, Mr. Kellogg. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing, hearing none, I'm going to call for.
Mr. Chairman, Mauer?
Yes? Discussion?
Thank you very much. So just wanted to mention that this was discussed a little bit in LNA, that my, my sole concern on it was with the union aspect, that this was, were we premature in passing this without having it first adopted by the union, the change of title and the change of the name of position? And the selectmen did talk in detail about the fact that the union has been made aware of this and is on board with the, the changes as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes eight to zero. We have no unresolved matters of unfinished business and no unresolved matters of new business. There is no second public participation this evening, and I am adjourning this meeting at 9:08 PM.